I apologize, everyone. We have a little difficulty there. Mayor, we are now recording in live. If you want to kick us off.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. It looks like we had a few technical difficulties, but we are here and ready to go and to tackle the the main event on tonight's agenda, which is the budget. So we have our our Finance Director, Anthony Francisco, here. He's going to walk us through the presentation, and I'm going to ask that everyone, please make note of your questions. Is anyone else getting feedback?
Bryce.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. It looks like we had a few technical difficulties.
I feel like a news reporter just now with my hand like this, like, thank you for enjoying that. Okay, well, hopefully, we're done with that. But please take notes of your questions so we can get through the presentation. And I'm assuming we all have a fair amount of questions, which is why I said, take notes instead of hold them. I don't want to forget anything. This will be a very interesting budget discussion. One could say the most interesting budget discussion we've had in a century. And it's amazing that this is Daryl's very first budget presentation. So way to kick it off with a bang, sir. And with that, do you have anything you want to add before we turn it over to Mr. Francisco?
As the mayor indicated, unprecedented times. Every budget that has ever been assembled is based on assumptions, and we're happy to share with you our assumptions, recognizing that every single assumption we have made related to several funds, not just the general fund, are all subject to debate interpretation. And we probably won't argue too heavily that we're right, and anybody else's opinions are in error. What we will commit to you is, given the nature of the unknowns, when will the ability to return to business as normal happen? We're going to be visiting this budget document several times throughout the upcoming fiscal year and making adjustments as new facts present themselves. So even post-adoption, that won't be your last fingerprints on this document. This document's going to get a lot of attention and probably multiple budget actions throughout the course of the next fiscal year. So we're buckled up in the front seat of this roller coaster and prepared to ride along with you.
Thank you, City Manager Pyle. With that, Mr. Francisco, take away.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of the council, Mr. City Manager, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Can everyone still hear me okay?
Yes. Did you share your screen yet, Anthony?
Yes. Except that there's no little pop-up over here.
I think it worked.
That's okay if it's not.
That is why, here.
You wouldn't believe this, but we actually practiced this earlier.
We appreciate all that every old dog is learning new skill type thing right now. So thank you.
Okay, welcome to the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. We are presenting for the first of three study sessions, the city manager's proposed budget to the city council. We will be talking tonight about the general fund, which is the largest fund of the city, and special revenue funds, of which there are several. But we're really talking about the budget documents in general, and notice that I said documents plural. Understand that, at least in my opinion, the budget is the most important document that the city puts out because it entails all sorts of information on every city operation. And it is not just a financial document, it is a policy document. It's an operations guide. All of the operations of the city are discussed in the budget, and it is a public communication device. Everything in the budget document is a public record, and we invite our citizens to view the budget that is online. Or if you want to get a paper copy, feel free to contact our offices. We are toward the end. We're kind of in the, starting the fourth quarter of the budget process that is really a fiscal year-round process. We started with the Finance Committee meetings back in September when we presented the closed book figures for last fiscal year. We had a budget study session for the full council in November. We discussed a whole lot of information related to the budget and various ramifications and impacts on the budget at the mid-year budget review in January, and I believe the full council was there for that discussion. We had a capital budget study session in February, and now we are into the presentation of the actual city manager's proposed budget. And again, this is the first of three study sessions that will be held. There'll be a second one on the 21st of April and a third one on the 5th of May. There'll be two public budget hearings, one at the council meeting next week and one at the council study, the council meeting on May the 26th. And then the council will consider the budget for final adoption on June the 9th. The budget was delivered to the council on Friday, both online and on paper. So I assume that you have it memorized by now. But if not, we would give for your information just kind of the layout of the documents themselves. From start to finish, if you will, the information is presented in the most summarized level. And as you go forward, it is given in more detailed level. So some of the information is repeated, at least in aggregated information upfront, and then given in detailed information as you move toward the back. But there are two or three of the sections that I would seriously draw your attention to to make sure that you read those parts of the budget document in detail. And the first of those is the city manager's letter that's right up front. It gives summarized information on all of the things that are included in the budget document, the impacts on things that are going on this fiscal year. It talks about the clouds that are over the budget. Each year, we have a different kind of a theme in the city manager's letter. You remember, one year, we did these mega trends. One year, we talked about oil and industry impacts on the city of Norman and our major employers and that sort of thing. But this year, because of that unprecedented uncertainty that the mayor was talking about, we're kind of focused on those clouds on the horizon. At least as relates to the general fund, we're kind of okay as we stand right now. We are not experiencing the dark situation that we were afraid of back in January when we had the petition looming over us that dealt with the University North Park TIF sales taxes. But there's a cloud on the horizon about that. And there's a cloud on the horizon, obviously, about the the impact of the COVID virus and how that will impact on our sales tax and room tax and pretty much everything that relates to the budget. And and I would say right up front, because I've been getting this question a lot, how will that impact the budget? And my short answer is, I don't know. And I think that most people would say that nobody knows. We don't know the depth. We don't know the length of of when stay-at-home order will be lifted. We don't know how people will come back from that and what their mood will be. We just don't know. So that is the cloud that I would say hovers over everything. That's discussed in the city manager's letter. After the city manager's letter, there's a community profile section that gives general demographic information on the city, and it gives some very useful comparisons between Norman and like cities, cities that are comparable to us in population size or in demographics earmarks. Those are things that we choose those six to be the benchmarks for, and that information is given in that community profile section. There's then an overview statistical section that gives some information on the city as a whole. The financial policies of the city are given on pages 34 through 53. And I would point out that when council adopts the budget, you re-adopt those policies. So this would be the time that if you want to review any of those policies, you might want to bring those discussions up. In the financial summary section, this is where councils' discussions throughout the year tend to center. There is a fund summary for every one of the 28 funds of the city and budget highlight information for each of those funds. So again, if you don't read anything else, I would strongly recommend that you read the city manager's letter. That's about 20 pages, and it's not that big. It's a bunch of pictures in there. So it's a pretty fast read. And I would strongly recommend that you read the fund summaries, the financial summary sections there on pages 54 through 120. On the next 350 or so pages are fund and department detail for all the operations of the city. And then there's a glossary and some other appendix information toward the back. As I stated, the council re-adopts the financial policies when you adopt the budget. There is a balanced budget requirement, which under state law, what that means is that basically there has to be a projected positive fund balance in every fund of the city at the end of the fiscal year that you're budgeting for. We do five-year forecasts, which are basically formula-driven forecasts of if we continue on the path that we are on, where we will be two, three, four years from now. The policies for debt reserves and operating and capital reserves are stated in that section, as is the levelized utility rate policy. We'll talk about that in the enterprise discussion that we'll have here in a few weeks. But we basically set our rates to make sure that we have a five-year period where we're okay with the given rate structure that we have. And as we'll talk about here in a few weeks, at least in the water fund, we are not at that point right now. The transfers to the general fund from the utilities and from the room tax are stated in that section, as is the entire Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act that we have to comply with, is given verbatim in that section. The city of Norman has established and very well-recognized reserve policies that we follow. They've been adopted by ordinance and amended by ordinance, but basically they state that we have to have at least a 3% operational reserve in the general fund, a 1% emergency reserve allocation. This is a budget account that has been appropriated by council. But by that ordinance, council has to appropriate that 1% of general fund expenditures into that emergency reserve account. So on top of that, there has to be at least a 4% rainy day fund, and this is a separate fund of the city, set apart in reserve, and we have a target of 5% of general fund expenditures to be set aside in that rainy day fund and a maximum of 6% to be set aside in that rainy day fund. So all of those things taken together, we have a policy that has been adopted by ordinance that says that we must have at least 8% and up to 10% of general fund expenditures set aside in reserve. Those funds that are set aside in the separate rate cannot be appropriated by council. And remember that only council can appropriate fund balances. But there are some strings attached to where council can appropriate rainy day fund balances. First, if the general fund balance falls below 1%, and again, that's kind of why it's actually called a net revenue stabilization fund. If the general fund balance is projected to fall below 1%, council can appropriate rainy day funds to balance or stabilize the general fund, if you will. There has to be a federally or state-declared disaster in Cleveland County after the emergency reserve of 1% has been spent. And as you know, right now, we are under a state and federally declared disaster. So at least that one restriction has been met right now. And there might be a need for drawing down rainy day fund balances for one-time capital expenditures that we are not anticipating. Right now, we projected at the end of this fiscal year, our rainy day fund will be above its minimum, but short of its targeted level.
Let's just get that going for me.
In your statistical section, there are all sorts of nice graphs that graphically depict various things in the general fund. And you can get a quick and quick look at things from looking at those graphs. For example, all over the city, all of the funds combined, we have projected total revenues in fiscal year '21 of $225 million. And you see the major sources of those revenues. General sales taxes, 34% of the pie. Utility fees are 26% of the pie. Where these revenues are coming from are kind of self-explanatory. But again, we have a heavy reliance on sales tax for our overall revenues. Our overall expenditures are projected to be $280 million, 873,000. The major areas that those funds are going to are capital improvements and public safety, those major areas that you would think about. A question is obviously begged. Spending projected $281 million. We're projecting to bring in $225 million. The difference is made up in revenues that were collected in previous years, particularly from general obligation bonds and from the Norman Forward notes that are on deposit at our trustee banks right now. We're projecting that we'll be drawing down some of those bond funds over the next fiscal year, particularly for those capital improvements that are projected here. The general fund, we project for next fiscal year at $85.9 million, is roughly $86 million. And you see that sales and use taxes comprise 60% of those revenues. I know that many council members have heard me say this before, but I want to reiterate that this pie chart would look very different in any city except cities in the state of Oklahoma. Because in cities in any state other than Oklahoma, the sales and use tax pie would be somewhere at 35, maybe 40%. There would be another pie that would be about 25 to 30% that would say property taxes. But in Oklahoma, property taxes cannot be used for municipal operations. And we're the only state that has that constitutional restriction. Thereby, we are more dependent on sales tax than any other state. And this picture is is kind of representative of any city in Oklahoma, but it's different than any other state. In the coming fiscal year, we're projecting to spend down $84.9 million. So at least at this point, as we're making our projections for the city manager's proposed budget, we're in the black in the general fund, and that's a good thing. It's been some years at this point in the budget process we've been able to say that. The major expenditure areas, again, are where you would expect police, fire, public works are the major areas of expenditure. These next couple of charts just show some general information about where the sales tax is divided up for the entire 8.75% of sales tax in the city of Norman. You see that a little more than half of that goes to the state of Oklahoma's sales tax. The city's general fund is 2.3%. There is a city dedicated capital improvement sales tax of 0.7%. Notice that I did not say capital penny. There's no such thing. It is 7/10 of 1%. There is a dedicated public safety sales tax of 1/2%. A Norman Forward sales tax for a temporary period until the year 2030 of 1/2%. And this purple slice down there at the bottom for the first time, as of what, Sunday? We have a dedicated city public transportation sales tax of 0.25%. The property tax distribution that you see there on the right, you see that the city of Norman is a very small part of our citizens' property taxes. The largest portion of your property taxes goes to Norman Public Schools and the Moore Norman Votech Center. This is an interesting picture of our sales tax growth over the last 11 years. And there are some very interesting trends that you can pick up by looking at this chart. The first thing that I would note is that going back about 11 years, you saw that we had a very, you know, kind of set fairly predictable growth rate in those blue bars of sales tax. But that was interrupted in in fiscal year 17 and 18, and it has really not come back, at least to the growth rate that we had been experiencing in the past. Some of that has been made up by increases in the rate of growth in the use tax. And the use tax is basically a sales tax on goods purchased outside of the city for use within the city. So really, catalog sales, online sales, when you order something from Amazon, they are supposed to pay a sales tax that is equal to the city's sales tax, and it's recorded as a use tax. But as you see, even though we've started to grow a little bit in the last year or two, we've really not come back to where we were five years ago. And that's the concern. And that's an ongoing concern for every one of the funds of the city that is dependent on sales tax. And again, we're dependent on sales tax, not just for the general fund, but for the public safety sales tax, for the Norman Forward sales tax, for the capital sales tax, for the public transit sales tax. We're very dependent on sales tax for all of these things. And so it's very important that we monitor those things and try to bend these trends as much as we can by enforcing the use tax collections on things purchased online and out of state, and where we try to reduce the number of sales tax exemptions and just do a better job of enforcing the sales tax statutes that are on the books already. The general fund is based on several revenue assumptions. The first of which is our growth projection for sales tax. And we discussed back in January that we were projecting about a 2% growth, and we've been on a fairly steady 2% growth rate for the last two fiscal years. That's down from our historic growth rate of 4%, but it had been a fairly fairly constant 2% growth with some ups and downs in between, but a fairly good trend of 2% growth. But we know that the effects of the COVID effect, as I'm calling it here, the stay-at-home orders, the businesses closing down, will have a dampening effect on that, both in the current fiscal year and as we're projecting it into the next fiscal year. I'm projecting a reduction in our growth rate next fiscal year that starts July 1st from 2% to 1.75%. And that is based on the considered opinion of a lot of folks about how we're going to come out of this depressed situation that we're in right now, how quickly we'll come back, how fast we'll come back, and when we'll come back. And when I say considered opinion, I just mean the guesses of a whole lot of people that I've been listening to. It's just that. It's a guess. Nobody can say for sure if it's going to be a V-shaped comeback, you know, a quick comeback and a steep comeback, or if it's going to be a slow comeback, or if it's going to be an L-shaped comeback, i.e., it's not going to come back at all. The considered opinion that I have heard and that I have kind of bought into is that we're going to experience a sort of a J-shaped comeback, or what I like to call as a saxophone player, a saxophone-shaped comeback. Where we're going to come back fairly rapidly, kind of at a slow growth rate, but probably not come back to the point where we are now. The the bell will not reach the the peak that we were at six, seven, eight months ago. So I'm calling it a saxophone-shaped comeback, and that's what that 1.75% growth is based on. But again, who knows what will actually happen? I certainly don't. Use taxes and franchise fees are projected to grow by 3% above their current year levels. Fines and forfeitures by 3%. Licenses and permit revenues are projected to grow by 1% from their current year levels. But I would point out that the current year levels have been fairly low. So we're projecting growth from a pretty low point in our building industry that is reflected in our license and permit revenues. Those transfers from the water and route of reclamation utilities are based on 5% of their revenues. They're basically making a payment to the general fund for their use of the public's right-of-way. We're making transfers from the room tax fund for administration of the room tax of 4%. And we're making cost allocation charges for the central services that the general fund is providing to the utilities and to the CDBG and grant funds. On the expenditure side, we're making assumptions that we will pay for the salaries of all of the budgeted positions for the full fiscal year at their budgeted level. And we have that if they are going to be paying for a merit increase, a longevity increase, that they will get those increases into their payroll. We did not assume any cost of living across-the-board adjustment for fiscal year '21. In the out-years, we're making projections to determine the future liability of the fund of a growth of 5% in the salary and benefit category that's kind of based on the growth rate over time of we have experienced over history. 1% in the service and maintenance and supply and materials categories, 2% internal services. And we're making an assumption that we will save $800,000 of those salary and benefit categories just through turnover and attrition actions that tend to happen over the course of the year. That equates to about 1 and 1/2% of our salaries. A lot of cities will budget 98, 98 and 1/2% of their salaries instead of budgeting the full salaries as we do. What we have done in Norman is that we budget the full salary and then make an assumption about how much of that might be saved. So that assumption in the coming year and in the next four fiscal years is $800,000 per year. We did not assume that there would be any inflation in the service and materials and supply materials categories. And we assume that the subsidies to the public transit fund and the public safety sales tax funds will have to be continued. There were no personnel changes being proposed in the fiscal year '21 budget by direction of the city manager. While some were requested and some were certainly needed, we did not approve any of those to be brought forward in the fiscal year '21 budget. However, there were some positions added, particularly in the public transit area during the fiscal year '20 fiscal year that are only going to be reflected in the budget in the coming fiscal year. The one personnel change was that the fire protection engineer position in the fire department is going to be contracted out. So that position will be deleted from the budget and funds will be added for those contractual services that will be performed on an ongoing basis by a contractor when reviews of the fire code have to be made. When I say that the city manager directed that no personnel be added in the coming fiscal year, that does not mean that no additional personnel are needed. We know that there are areas that we need to expand services, like in the stormwater area, to meet federal mandates. We need to add a street sweeper crew, and we need to add another maintenance crew. We know that these are personnel that need to be added. We know that we're behind on our street maintenance and our traffic signals and signs personnel. The Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee has pointed out to the The Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee has pointed out to the council repeatedly that we are behind on the Public Safety Sales Tax Personnel Plan that was adopted by the voters in twenty fifteen, so we need to be adding um some more school resource officers, four SROs and two dispatchers. Uh the dispatchers we know we're going to need when the new emergency operations center opens up, but those positions are not included in the fiscal year twenty one budget. Council has discussed the desire to add personnel and services to uh better serve our disability community and our homeless communities. Um we know that those needs are out there, but we do not have the funds to to um to meet those needs right now, at least in the city manager's proposed budget. We know that we need to add maintenance personnel for fleet. We know that we need park and ground maintenance personnel. Um actually, in last fiscal year budget, we had added an internal audit function that council wanted to add. Uh but that got cut out for financial reasons. We know that that really needs to be there. A city our size usually has an internal audit function. We know that we need to add another fire station in the south central part of town, uh but uh another fire station with all of its staffing is about a million dollars a year. And we don't have the money in the general fund to address that right now. Turning to public transit and remember that we have a new public transportation fund for the city of Norman. The city um took over the operation of the city's public transit system in August. Uh we had a fairly smooth transition to the contracted operation by embark. And that is no small credit to embark and no small credit to our public work staff and in our new public transit coordinator. Uh one of those positions that was added during the current fiscal year. Uh but it was a fairly seamless transition. You heard about some problems in the in the mix, but for the most part, it was a seamless transition. The city is now a mass transit grant recipient. We're expecting one point eight million dollars or so um this fiscal year and in every fiscal year moving forward. I know Sean O'Leary is out there listening. Where's my money, Sean? I'm 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 looking for that two million this fiscal year and every fiscal year moving forward. There's been a lot of work that has been done to to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is to meet all the federal transit regulations to get that money in hand, and we're still expecting it to come this fiscal year and in the fiscal years moving forward. Um there was some success in obtaining a Department of Transportation grant for one replacement bus. Uh in the fiscal year twenty one budget, we are continuing the general fund subsidy at its current level of one point one five million dollars per year to the public transit operation. So the operation of public transit between the two million dollars roughly that we expect every year from the federal transit grant, the two and a half million dollars that we expect every year from the public transit sales tax and the million one from the general fund subsidy, we think that we're okay. At least for our current operations of the public transit system. But we know that we will need additional funding going forward for vehicle replacements, and we know that one bus costs about a half a million dollars. Yeah, when we ca- when we come to the capital fund in a few weeks, we'll be talking about the capital outlay. Uh but we have a capital outlay budget that funds our fleet replacements right now. And we have about eight million dollars of critical capital uh needs for vehicle replacements and about two million dollars to replace them in the coming fiscal year. We know that we need more money for vehicle replacements and that additional need has been made worse by the need for replacement buses. So that's something that council just needs to have in your mind. We also know uh that we need to build a transit maintenance facility. That has been an ongoing discussion of council and will be as we move forward. Um the current um the price tag of that transit maintenance facility um is right now, I understand, to be about seven and a half million dollars uh with no real identified revenue source to pay for it. And that's something that council needs to have in your mind going forward because it is a crushing and current need to keep the buses on the street. We need to build that maintenance facility. The other special revenue funds that we've not touched on yet, some of them include the Cleet Fund, um this is where um offenders to the municipal court have to pay a fee um that goes into the Council for Law Enforcement Training Fund and police and courts personnel can pay for um training programs out of that fund. Uh we have the CDBG Fund, uh and as you know, the CDBG Home Program has its own separate budget process uh that will be completed sometime in May, and then that will get folded into the budget that the council will finally adopt. But there is some action being considered right now to transition some of the funds included in our current year CDBG budget so uh for some COVID related services and and that will be coming to council's attention here in the next week or two. I have a very big concern about our room tax fund. This is anecdotal, but pretty darn sure uh that because a lot of our hotels are closed down right now, we're not collecting a whole lot of room tax. We won't have the hard data uh for another few weeks, for the month of March and a month and a half or so for the month of April. But we know that it's going to be bad. For that reason, uh we have already given notice to the Visit Norman uh contractors and to the Arts Council that we are reducing their uh payments from the room tax in this current fiscal year. And we are reducing the amount that we project for revenues to come to them in the next fiscal year because of that COVID effect. We don't know how long, we don't know how deep, but we know that it's bad. I speak to you as a as a board member of the Norman Arts Council. I know that Brenda's a board member of Visit Norman. Um and we know the hardships that that has already caused them uh to deal with those reductions in this current year. It's in the hundreds of thousands for Visit Norman and tens of thousands for the Arts Council. This is real money. This is real time, and this is a real problem. We hope going forward, if we have that saxophone um shaped comeback or hopefully a V shaped comeback when all of the um events that got canceled this spring are concentrated in the summer and the fall, we hope that our room tax might come back fairly sharply, but we don't know. Um we don't, we do know though, that right now our hotel industry is in really bad shape, and that's reflecting in our room tax. We have a seizure and restitution fund. And we did not project any major expenditures from that fund uh in the uh projected budget for next fiscal year as uh needs are identified uh from the seizures and restitution funds that are on hand. Those will come forward to council for an appropriation of fund balance from the seizures fund. We have several grants that we um count on each year, but the only one of them that we budget for in advance is the DUI Grant. We have an Art in Public Places Fund and a Westwood Park Special Revenue Fund. In the fiscal year twenty one budget, we did not assume any subsidy to the Westwood Fund to subsidize the golf course operation. Council's talked about that um over the last few months. And um the operators of the golf course are fairly confident that they can operate the Westwood Fund as a whole with no subsidy from the general fund. Again, the COVID effect is having a big impact on the golf course. Um we've had beautiful weather in March and the first part of April that would have really positively impacted on the golf course revenues, and that's gotten written off. Um again, we hope that the weather will hold. We hope that we can certainly open up the swimming operation on time and that we can take advantage of good weather on the outdoor tennis courts and in the indoor tennis facility um once the orders have been lifted. But right now, those those impacts of the COVID virus are severe for the Westwood Fund. In the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, we talked about um that we are behind on adding personnel, at least as they were planned when uh in twenty fifteen, the Public Safety Sales Tax was made permanent. The critical capital needs are progressing. We are almost fully deployed with the new radio system. And I understand from talking to some of our um first responders that the reception is great. Um that to the east side of the lake, to the far south side of Lake um Lake Thunderbird, the reception is great and two hundred, three hundred percent better than it had been in the past. So so that has been money extremely well spent. The new emergency operations center is in final design. And as council has discussed, they have been for months trying to cut back the design of the facility to try to get it back into the available funds in the public safety sales tax. But the question will be posed is, are we cutting back too much? And maybe we should be looking at some additional revenues um to build that thing the way that we really want it to be built. And certainly as it was envisioned to be built when the public safety sales tax was passed by the voters. So to summarize some major budget operational issues that we have for the fiscal year twenty one and going forward, I talked about the fact that at least in the general fund, we are projecting to operate in the black uh in fiscal year twenty one, and that's a good thing. But as we move forward into the future years, um we are looking at operational expenditures exceeding operational revenues again. And so in the long term, we still have a problem to address in our general fund and several of our other special revenue funds. We have that cloud over over our general fund budget. Um as you know, council um passed an ordinance in November to effectuate the budget decision that was made in fiscal year twenty one where we assumed that all of the revenues from University North Park's sales tax would be deposited to the general fund and the capital fund. But that council ordinance was challenged by a petition. And since that petition was filed and deemed to be um valid by the city clerk, um we have set aside those funds and we have continued to apportion sales tax to the University North Park Tiff Fund. As you know, that petition was challenged by four former mayors and the district court held that the petition was invalid. And that's a good thing. That's a great thing for our general fund and capital fund. As long as the district court's ruling is upheld, we will be able to put a full year's worth of sales tax from University North Park into the general fund and capital fund. But under the advice of the city attorney, we are still apportioning sales tax and still putting the sales tax aside that we have apportioned so far this fiscal year until we are clear from the um period that that um district court ruling might be appealed. And unfortunately, because of the COVID virus, the appeal deadline keeps getting pushed back. So this period of uncertainty is being extended. It's a cloud over the budget. We'd be back to where we were in the horror story that we were experiencing in January before the petition was successfully um challenged in court. The problem is that if the petition is appealed, we have this much less time to adapt to having to have that three and a half million dollars of sales tax unavailable to the general fund and the capital fund. So we really hope that the district court's opinion will will stand and that we can move that money to the general fund uh and to the capital fund. On an ongoing basis, we know that we don't have adequate funding for stormwater fleet maintenance, park maintenance personnel and a whole lot of other areas. We know that because that the Public Safety Sales Tax and the um some other funds get subsidies from the general fund, um those shortfalls exacerbate the problems in the general fund. We know that. Those are things the council has to consider on an ongoing basis. And we've had some really good discussions about things that we might do about that over the last uh month or so. But 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 just know that 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 uncertainty continues, and those are things that we know that we need to address. That's really the end of my major presentation. Uh going forward from here, next week, next council meeting, there'll be the first of the public budget hearings. There'll be another um council uh presentation on the capital fund on the twenty first and the interfi- enterprise funds on May the fifth. And then the fiscal year will actually start with a adopted budget. Doesn't have to be exactly what the city manager has proposed, but there has to be an adopted budget that will start on July the first.
Okay, it looks like we have some questions. Anthony, um Councilmember Wilson.
And I have a couple of questions. Uh some of these I probably should know. I'm so sorry. On the license and permitting fees, does that include things like the um businesses, uh o- o- operating fee, like I'm getting at the medical marijuana? How did that? I know we had a lot of new businesses last year, in the last year. But then we are, didn't renew a bunch of businesses yet, probably because of all the closures. So what are we feeling about that? And I've got more questions.
Uh yes, those are included in the license and permit category. Um we assume that those uh licenses that are outstanding will be renewed by the end of the fiscal year. But the the category is driven really by the building permits. So so it's really a reflection of the building industry.
Because that's the bigger ticket items. Those are the bigger dollar items. Okay. Um then on the eight hundred thousand dollar employee turnover, i- is that an account?
No, man. It's not an account. It's just an assumption that we make at the fund summary level that of the budgeted allocations that we have in the salary and benefit category, we assume that we're going to save eight hundred thousand dollars of those budgeted expenditures.
Okay, and for that to get allocated, um so say we didn't fill, there was eight hundred thousand dollars in that of savings. Does that come to council to deal with or that's just gets redistributed or it just never happened?
It's an assumption of what will happen during the course of the year that will impact on the fund balance. So where the council's actually would be reflected is in appropriating fund balance. It might be higher or lower because those things came to pass or they didn't.
Oh, y'all froze. Okay, I have another question. And COVID related CDBG, I know you said we'll be talking about that coming. Uh can you hint to, is that going to be looking like rent relief or rent stabilization?
Um, Your Honor, if I can interject, um it looks like we could receive an additional um allocation or entitlement of uh CDBG funding. It could be in the half a million dollar range. Uh we're working on program parameters. We want to bring you what those opportunities look like recognizing the current um coronavirus impacts on the local economy. I think we're thinking the way you are thinking that probably the most appropriate uh and most needed use of those funds will come in the form of relief uh and support for people displaced or struggling because of uh job displacement, et cetera, caused by uh the current pandemic. So we're working on on what those uh program options look like. We're trying to be in regular conversation with our case managers uh at the state, and they're really on skeleton crews, so they're not real responsive on the phone. But uh I I think staff is thinking along the same lines council is thinking. So it should be a real productive conversation when we're able to bring you those options in the very near future.
Okay, and then I have one more question, but on that note, I I I know there's been an email going, and I don't know if this is appropriate, talk about it or not, but I'm going to go and do it. Uh I would really like to see this council uh make some sort of resolution for a ninety day moratorium on evictions, just to support. Uh so just throwing that out there. We don't talk about it right now, but um I know that email is going around, but I would love to pair that with this uh possible opportunity to have some funds because I know we've got, we've got insecure folks that are thinking and they're going to get evicted, and then we have insecure landlords that are thinking that they're not going to get paid. So I really, I know y'all know this, but it's a huge problem. One more question that's unrelated or related to some of this, uh COVID related. One more question that's unrelated or related to some of this COVID related Norman arts, I wrote myself a note, hold on. And the, if the room tax comes back, like if we get, if we see the saxophone. Lost you. There you are. If we see the saxophone happen and, and that recovers real fast. How, how does that get adjusted back out to them? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes, that makes perfect sense. Basically, if it comes back very strongly during the course of next fiscal year. The, the room tax fund balance wouldn't be growing. And, and council could appropriate some of that room tax fund balance for additional services in those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have questions from Councilmember Holman.
Okay, as far as medical cannabis, I know we don't get a list of exactly what businesses generate sales tax, but as Councilmember Wilson mentioned with permits. Having well over a hundred new businesses within the last year or year and a half. Have we seen any indication of what that's generating for the city of Norman?
We have tracked some individual dispensaries as, as sort of an indicator of, of the growth in that industry. But as far as its impact on the overall sales tax, I would suspect that it's, it's fairly minor. But, but yes, we could give you the impact of what we have tracked.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'd like to see some more detailed information about that for sure. So you mentioned also, you know, we haven't fulfilled the, you know, all of the PSSD obligation when it comes to personnel yet. But, you know, part of the RSO or SRO program, you know, is that MPS is covering half that cost as well. And from what I understand, they haven't been able to make that contribution fully yet either.
That's correct.
Are we planning to go forward with that still even without them? I know part of the UMP TIF agreement dealt with that a little bit. So as far as making them whole.
We have not really, although the PSSD Oversight Committee has suggested that the city might move forward without the school district contributing an increased share. We have not, at least in the past, promoted doing that, moving forward with the full program without them sharing in the cost. So that's not something that we've considered. The ordinance that the council passed in November, as it related to the Norman Public Schools was toward the operation of the aquatic center. So once the aquatic center has been built and opens, then yes, there would be some TIF money to provide for the operations of the aquatic center on behalf of Norman Public Schools.
Okay, I couldn't recall because we, you know, Councilmember Hickman and others had talked previously about covering Norman Public Schools' costs of the SRO program. Due to the fact that we were ending the UMP TIF early and that they were getting reduction state funding due to that. Did we not go forward? I just couldn't recall.
Yes, but that is, that the way that we proposed to do that and the council adopted in November was that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be set aside toward the operation of the aquatic center.
Okay. Well, yeah, I would, I don't know that I would want to go forward with the totality of the SRO program if MPS isn't ready to be on board with it. I've always felt that it's maybe city police officers, but it's their facilities. And, you know, I, I do think they should be intimately involved in the program, including the funding of it. So I have a couple more questions. The PSSD radio, I didn't catch, is it paid off completely yet or are we still paying it off?
There were bonds issued to pay for the cost. The bonds have not been paid off yet. But the, that the funds to pay for the radio system and for that matter, the EOC building are set aside from those bond proceeds.
What was the interest rate on the bonds for the radios?
I'll lift those up and let you know.
Anthony, while you're looking that up, if I can respond to Councilmember Holman relating to the school resource officer conversation. Dr. Nick and I actually had a meeting scheduled to discuss the next round of school resource officers and the district's ability to support the program at a higher level. Just before all of the slowdown in COVID nineteen activities began to unfold. So that meeting has been put on hold. I think that one of the slides that Mr. Francisco shared showed the school's funding from an ad valorem tax perspective. I'm assuming that the educational budgets will have a little better elasticity than ours might on the sales tax side. But I think once the dust settles, it's a meeting that we will again reinitiate. We see great value in the school resource officer program, great bang for the buck with the school's participation. And just great insight. I think we solve a lot of problems before they become big problems. Developing those trusting relationships between our, our kiddos and our police department. So I think there's real strong support inside the organization. And it's just a matter of getting the dollars all to line up. But I think we also have a very willing and supportive partner in Norman Public Schools.
And to answer your question, Councilmember Holman, about the outstanding Norman Municipal Authority bonds. That is on page four forty nine of your budget. And again, when I say the budget is a great document for all the information that you might need. The problem is that a guy like me or a lady like Kim who wrote the thing, we know where to look for all of that information. You may not, but ask us. So thirty seconds, I can answer your question. It's on page four forty nine. The interest rate on those bonds was two point three three percent. They pay off on March first of twenty twenty seven.
Thank you, Anthony. I think this is my seventh budget, I believe. Yeah, there's still stuff I learn about it each time as well. So I have another question that may be an Anthony and Sean question. I received Sean's email about the Porter Court or streetscape issue. And just maybe look for some clarity on if that's something will be some of those recommendations on how to address that, if that will be in this budget or in next year's and how we might be going about that exactly.
If I may, Councilor, appreciate the read there. I know it's a lot to consider. I think it could end up in the twenty twenty budget, but more likely in the twenty twenty one discussion. And probably more likely in the capital side. So this is probably a, a topic that will come up here in a couple of weeks or whenever that capital meeting is with council on the budget. Many of the ideas that we put in that email to you today and to Councilmember Hall really fall in various capital program categories. For instance, the street maintenance bond program and so on. So I think it will, we, we think most of the solutions are in those areas. And or in possible federal funding for specific sidewalk programs. Things that have come out of this new ranking and rating process with ACOG that are setting those sidewalk projects and LED street lighting projects to be more favorable than they were even a couple of years ago. So lots of ideas. We think we can close the gap in the same schedule. We think we'll build the project in twenty twenty one. Or we're going to have to get creative on some of those funding sources.
And to be clear, I don't know if I ever mentioned this in our previous conversations, but I was not under, ever under the impression that that project was going to redo the intersection of Alameda and Porter. I was always under the impression that it was a streetscape project that would end right before the intersection. And that we would have to figure that one out at a later date probably. But I do appreciate you and your staff working on that. That is a very important piece. And I do agree, we got to do the whole thing. So I'm looking forward to having a further discussion on that. I appreciate the information, Sean.
You're welcome.
Other than that, well, that actually does remind me, you mentioned the ACOG ranking. Is that, we have any updates on the ACOG ranking process, the projects?
We do. We sent it out to you. I can resend it tomorrow. I think it was a couple of weeks ago. Generally, good news, certainly better than last year. We put in round numbers. We were hoping for about a ten million dollar appropriation this year. We, we got five million. We, we did secure funding for the Robinson I thirty five West Side project, which is our top priority there. We did not secure funding for the thirty six avenue Northwest Bond project. So some winners and losers there. We did get some other funding. As Anthony mentioned, we did get funding for a new bus, which was not expected. Again, that's part of that, that funding change there at ACOG. So generally, we're, we're very happy about that. Our partners in Oklahoma City are taking all the money now. That's kind of the, the latest outcome. They were very small players, frankly, in, in the last twenty five years. They really had very little interest in the program and rarely even applied for big projects. Now they are taking fifty six percent every year. So we are, that's kind of the new rules of the, of the game. As long as Oklahoma City is going to, going to play that hard. We're going to be fighting for that remaining forty four percent every year.
I appreciate the update. I guess we'll probably be having a discussion about what to do with the thirty six avenue Northwest project in the future. Cause we know that's been delayed a couple of years already. So I appreciate the update. Outside of that, I would just add that I definitely support any kind of resolution about rent. Just to encourage leniency. One of the things I've, I've noted that the city of Los Angeles did. You know, I don't know that we need to go as far as they did necessarily, but they did a, I think, twelve month period to catch up with your rent when this is over proclamation. I think it might have a bit more teeth there. But definitely some very creative ways. I've been seeing cities try to address that around the country. I'm definitely more than willing to support anything we can do from a city government standpoint to help people in our community. Other than that, I think that's it from me. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I guess I'll go. Can everyone hear me?
I can.
Okay. Um, first, this is a question for Anthony. I know you said that there would be no COLA increases in next year's budget. Do you happen to have a number of what it would cost to add COLA increases into next year's budget?
Rule of thumb, a one percent across the board cost of living adjustment costs about six hundred thousand dollars in the general fund.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think, I think this year probably more than many other years. I think people are looking at a lot of increased costs and changes in their lifestyles through no fault of the So I know that we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room in our budget, but this is one that really disappoints me that we're not able to add. I'm sure that a large percentage of our employees are going to be getting step increases or merit increases. But there are going to be a number who aren't. And it disappoints me that they're not going to be looking at any kind of a raise for this coming year.
I would remind you that the negotiation process is separate from the budgeting process. So when I say that there was no cost of living adjustment budgeted for, that may not mean that there would be one negotiated.
I understand. I appreciate that. That also then answers that second part of that question. This next one is maybe for you, maybe for Daryl, I'm not sure. Other than the CDBG coronavirus grant, are there any other federal, I assume funding opportunities available either in the existing stimulus bills that have passed or any rumblings about what might be coming up in the future?
I'll share with you what I have heard and, and everybody's got different news feeds coming in. There was discussion this morning about local government relief that would have to come from the federal government. And we anticipate conversations in the next week about what is being called round four or the fourth phase of the coronavirus response and relief bill. And I think that'll be the part that takes the total federal participation up to about six trillion. But supposedly in that fourth phase of the conversation, impacts to local government can be addressed. We don't know what form or flavor. But from our perspective, when those conversations are taking place, we recognize those are federal tax dollars being paid by Norman residents. And we want to make sure we're getting Norman residents fair share of those federal dollars back here to continue services.
I appreciate that. Go after as much as you can.
If I may weigh in, Councilmember Bearman, we discovered on Friday, one of the coolest things that we've discovered in recent days is a five point one million dollar earmark to transit for Norman. If this is our earmark. Oklahoma City gets twenty five million. We attended a webinar this, today at noon, trying to figure out what that means and what we can do with it. It looks really favorable. It looks pretty open to operating costs, capital costs. It may be a major fix to our facility problem. We're, we're working on that right now. So really good news there. We're trying to figure out how in the world we would have five million dollars in COVID costs related to transit. We're not going to have that, but it does seem pretty open. So we'll, we'll keep you posted. It's a, it's a hot issue that we're following pretty closely. Hoping, hoping to have some clarity on our options by maybe as early as Friday of this week.
I appreciate that. And I'm sure that you can come up with some really excellent numbers about reduced, reduced participation in public transit. Increased cleaning cost, increased cost of management. I think, I think there are all kinds of fun numbers out there we can grab. And so this might be for Anthony, but this is particularly related to a conversation that I had with Daryl back towards the beginning of the year. Daryl, is this going to be the first year that you entertain some idea of introducing expenditure control budgeting into our budgeting process?
This is, this is going to be a tough year. Because we think after adoption, this budget will be touched frequently. I think conceptually, what we did recognize in, in, in the case of every department coming into the document in your hands tonight. That recognition that we need to save dollars today because that may be what keeps us in full operation in the next fiscal year. That Ted Gableer book, Reinventing Government and the Inception of Expenditure Control Budgeting. I think it's a magnificent tool that can absolutely be done in concert with council's recognition and understanding that you provide some incentive to the departments to actually save money and avoid, you know, the typical use it or lose it government mindset. Happy to report that mindset is not part of the conversation that led to tonight's budget. Everybody was willing to participate. But that reward incentive in expenditure control budgeting. I think if, if that is something that council would be interested in entertaining, we can absolutely include that in next year's budget development, hopefully when we're out of crisis mode. Much easier to implement then.
Yeah, that, that book is very high on my what I wish I was reading right now list, which means of course I haven't gotten to it. But I do think it would be a great time to start that conversation. I, the little bit of looking into it that I did after our meeting earlier this year. I felt really good about it and I feel like it is at least part of the answer to a lot of concerns that council members have expressed about budgeting and about the end of the year rush. So hopefully we can start on that path and maybe even at some point, schedule a study session on what it is. So everyone can be as excited about it as I am. And then my last question is probably mostly for Anthony, but possibly also for Daryl. Is this the appropriate time to start discussing changes to the funding structure for the capital fund? You know, we've had some discussions about reducing the percentage allocation and going with a more geo bond type process.
There's, there's never a wrong time to ask questions or to present proposals for us to, to develop. So yes, at any time, send Daryl an email, send me an email and we'll get to work on, on whatever your, your interests are.
I would, I would like to at least tug on that string and see what that would look like. Maybe get some, you know, in a budget, in a budget situation. Maybe get some, you know, in a budget, in a budget situation is not a bad time to do that, to say if if we were to do things a different way and either drastically reduce or eliminate the the capital or capital sales tax allocation, this is what your budget would look like. This would be the kind of thing that we would be putting together a bond package for. You know, I think when we're conceptualizing a budget, adding to think about how it would look if we did things differently. So I will send that email tonight. We'll see where that goes.
Absolutely. With the capital budget conversation here in the next couple of weeks, we have discussed what the what the ballot language looks like to provide council with flexibility in having that portion of our sales tax revenue be unallocated to capital only, put in the discretionary general fund budget. Just to, I mean, when the capital needs there, you would have flexibility. And in, you know, COVID-nineteen circumstances, when you needed it for operations, it would be wonderful if you had that tool in your toolbox so we can share with you what we think that language would need to look like and then show you what the impact to the budget would look like as well.
Sounds great. Well, that was all my questions. I'm still here. I just have to go and lay on the floor for a minute because this mask-making effort that I'm on has absolutely destroyed my back. So I'm still here, I'm still listening, I'm just gonna be lying flat on the floor for the next few minutes.
Got it.
Can I go? Can I go?
Go.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't hear Brenda, I was trying to wait. So I have a couple of questions. Hi, guys, thank you so much for all your work on this. And so I have a couple of questions about kind of just the status on like the five million from the hospital sale. The I saw also that FEMA funds, Oklahoma should be receiving some funds from FEMA to be dispersed into counties and such. Do we kind of know anything about that and how it could help us or hurt or, you know, help us? And then about the revenues for this year, is the three-point-five million from the TIF petition factored into that? And then also a question about the employee savings, I presume, from the estimated versus actual, that it was because we had budgeted for several positions that we decided not to fill due to this whole potential budget, significant budget shortfall? So just some questions there.
You bet. And I'll go first, Anthony, in in touching base on the hospital conversation. Like my conversation with Dr. Nick regarding the SRO program, Mr. Richie Split and Catherine and I had scheduled to go over escrow instructions and what that purchase and sale agreement would look like and, you know, clarity on all of the appraisals, et cetera. That got canceled, and the hospital's been really, really busy. We do know it has not fallen off of the back burner at the hospital, but they are literally all hands on deck addressing the current crisis. So we should be able to circle back, I'm guessing, end of May with the hospital and start preparing the purchase and sales agreement that would come back to council. So still on the plate, still of importance to both the city and the hospital. And once we come out the other end of this, I think that'll move to the top of the list fairly quickly. Mr. Francisco?
As it relates to the, yeah, as it relates to the three-point-five million dollars, and that's in the general fund, yes, it is assumed that those revenues will be recorded to the general fund and the capital fund, both in fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. So the assumption is that the petition will be unsuccessful. As far as the employee turnover savings is concerned, that eight-hundred thousand dollars is not related to any specific position. It is an assumption about the effect of turnover citywide throughout the fiscal year. So, for example, whenever an employee retires, it takes a period of two months, three months to fill the position, to get it advertised, for somebody to be selected, for them to give notice to their former employer. And in that time, between the time that the incumbent employee left and a new employee comes in, there is some salary savings built up. So the assumption is that over time and over the course of the year, that tends to work out to be about one and a half percent of the salary and benefit category of expenditure that gets saved.
Okay, Councilmember Scanlon, it's your turn.
Sorry, I didn't get the answer on the FEMA funds, but I appreciate y'all if you don't mind. Sorry, sorry, Bill.
The FEMA, now personally, I haven't seen the headline on the FEMA dollars being allocated to the state. But if if any of the other department heads have seen any of those headlines, please chime in. If not, I'll be digging into that tonight, and we'll have some answers out to you via email in the next day or two.
Okay, and then just before before Councilmember Scanlon goes, then I also support some sort of, I don't know, rent freeze so that our our citizens, residents, and tenants are all safe and don't have as much to worry about considering so many people are losing their jobs, and that's all.
Okay, Councilmember Scanlon, go ahead.
When I read this, these documents delivered to my porch, I spent time reading the city manager's letter and then some of the statistical detail by department. And first of all, I thought the letter was well-written and it answered a lot of the questions I had going into this whole thing. And looking at the statistical detail, I was frankly surprised because I saw where there were increases by department that were fairly modest, and there are more decreases in terms of the FY twenty-one request than I would have expected. So hats off to staff in all departments for a good job. And I think the city manager probably had an iron hand in this whole process. A couple, well, an editorial comment, the SROs were mentioned. I too had a conversation with the superintendent, actually a couple of them. One of them during a visit I made to Norman North and another one at the Chamber Celebration. And on both occasions, he mentioned a willingness to proceed with a conversation of funding more SROs. I'm very encouraged by that, having spent time on the Public Safety Committee and fought about SROs. I believe they're sorely needed, and the fact that he's willing to discuss it, I think is a positive thing. And sooner is better than later in terms of that discussion. I I was encouraged to hear from Sean about the unexpected five million dollars and wondering where to spend it, I don't think is a problem. Two comments, I guess, in Sean's department, one of them having to do with with buses. Great to hear that we have an ACOG grant to buy a bus. Sean, where do we stand with the grant request on the electric bus?
As Sir Scanlon, that, believe it or not, that grant program got delayed. Like like most of the grant programs, either they're being delayed in delivering funds from last year's grants or the new grant applications are being delayed for all the same reasons, the COVID-nineteen thing. So we've got another month actually before that deadline is upon us for a submittal of the grant application for the electric bus. We have it almost put together, so we're certainly going forward, and we think we'll be successful. Again, that's about a two-year delivery. So by the time you, if we get the grant and administer the grant, probably two years before we see that first electric bus. By the way, we are incorporating electric charging stations into our new transit facility location if we can get the funding to to build that. Would just add to that, we did get the grant from ACOG for the for one new bus. We are also pursuing another grant opportunity for a second bus. So lots of opportunities there, and we think we'll have enough dollars in this year's program to buy, to replace one of our buses. So we're really making great progress, much faster than we thought we would in the bus replacement area.
Councilmembers.
This again dwells, I think.
Yes, sir. Oh, I just wanted to say that in in terms of what you recognized in the requests and the decreases in budgets offered up by departments, how that came to fruition is Anthony and Kim, in our first budget kickoff meeting at the staff level, we spent a little time managing expectations from day one, but for a different reason. At the time, we were concerned about the status of the petition and the outcome of a UNP TIF decision. So that put us on a real conservative note from day one of the budget development process. Little did we know that that same level of conservative budget preparation would come in really, really handy, given all the unknowns we wound up with. So I'll tell you, we had a wonderful response by every department from day one when we all got on the same page as what we thought the future looked like. Everybody responded brilliantly and much appreciated.
It was not my intent to portray you with whip in hand by any stretch of the imagination. I I I know from having worked with a lot of the staff on various things that they very much are a pull-together, let's-get-this-done group. And I'm I'm in awe of the work that they do. I have to talk to all, to you, Daryl, and to the entire department heads and their staffs. Good for them. One more question, I think, for Sean. And this relates to monies that sat in a as a line item in PSST, eight-hundred-and-seventy K for a fire apparatus storage facility, which I now notice is not there. We had discussed many times that that should be subsumed into the fleet maintenance structure that we know that we desperately need now to service the buses. Is that's what's happened, did it just move over?
No, sir, we we have used part of that for the initial design fees for the facility, for the combined facility. You're gonna see another agenda item next Tuesday on your agenda for an amendment to that same architectural contract to get us to the final design ready for bids as early as July. Again, assuming we can get some funding for the construction. And I would just note that, in fact, Chief and I were just communicating yesterday, our intent is to pay back that fund with the bond funds or grant funds or whatever source we get for the transit facility to pay it back to PSST for the share that they are contributing to get us to this point. So whatever they are spending on transit through through PSSD, we'll go back into that fund, and they can use that for other, you know, apparatus and that sort of thing.
Thank you. And again, I guess dwelling on PSSD, but the Emergency Operations Center, we've talked about many times in council proper, it is important that that thing is funded at a level that makes it capable and and not just building something with the money we have available. It'll be inadequate to need and not worth the money we put into it if we don't do it right. I noticed too, in looking at the budget level of detail and with regard to CDBG, I noticed anticipated grants in twenty-one were significantly less than twenty. I'm not sure that that's the case, particularly when I'm hearing that there are other things coming our way. Any comment on that, did I misread it?
No, we would not have anticipated anything related to additional COVID CDBG money in those budget projections. We hope that comes to fruition, and if it does, then we would amend the city manager's budget for whatever is the updated CDBG budget.
Just one more comment or two. Councilmember Bearman mentioned, among other things, investigating the capital set aside in the sales tax. I I think that's a discussion that's very timely that we need to have, so I look forward to whatever you all might present. And I too am concerned, as has been expressed by several others, about the the whole rent situation in this this time of of virus. It is a discussion that we need to have. We may not be able to legislate anything, but we can certainly put forward the sentiment of the council, and I look forward to that further discussion. So I thank everybody for their hard work. This has been very educational. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carter is next, and we do have others in line. I haven't forgotten you.
I'm unmuted.
You're on mute, go ahead.
Hey, I guess two questions. The one just popped into my mind for Mr. O'Leary. Did we decide to paint the buses or is that on hold?
Catherine, we are doing some basic painting and repair of the really bad buses. That money was not cut from our budget in the recent cuts, and so we felt like we just really needed to make an effort at cleaning those up. None of them have been branded or decal, but they, the white paint is being restored yet.
Great, great, great. And so then my second question would be for Mr. Pyle. And this is more just kind of a decorum question. Because last year, we went through this process with Ms. Rupp, and so you're new. And so I just want to run by just a decorum-type question. Because Anthony, I think, said it really well, that a budget's, it's a policy statement, it's a mantra statement, it's your morals, your goals, you know, what are our priorities? And I think you've done a fantastic job. Thank you so much. But it 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 won't surprise me if if council might see a line item or two that might be a little higher priority than what you may not have gotten, you know? And so how would you like to see us offer an amendment to this? Would it be like a friendly amendment, a consensus at a study session-type thing? Or is it something we should wait till we get to the formal approval process and offer a formal-type amendment? What's your guidance there for me?
We would love your comments and concepts on recommended tweaks as early as possible and recognize that at each step where we have either a study session with the council or it's a conference, pre-conference, before a regular council meeting or a public hearing with the public, that we'll be making those notes and adjustments. The book you received won't change again. We won't go through that expense to print a new book, but we'll be making those notes. So what you can adopt in the last as amended over this course. So we will take your amendments, build it into what will become the final budget document, and kind of show you what those running changes look like as we take steps through the budget process.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would point out that any financial changes to the proposed budget do have to be done by a formal council motion. So so as the city manager said, we want to get whatever tweaks you wanted to do as far in advance as possible so that we can prepare those proposed amendments with real research behind whatever those proposals are, and then council can can debate what they actually want to do when you come to final adoption. At least with the past processes, what has happened is, so, for example, tonight, Councilmember Bearman talked about this idea of potentially changing the the capital budget formula. And and yes, we will come forward with some ideas about how that might be done, discuss them at a future finance committee or for council study session, and there's room for that within the budget process. And then we would prepare amendment language for you to consider just before the actual budget adoption, probably at the study session on June the second. And at that point, you would say, I want, you know, I move that. And the "I move that" language would have already been prepared with research backing it up before you actually got to the meeting where you're actually making an emotion to amend the city manager's budget.
And those would be voted on line item by line item, or would that be one?
They usually voted on by category or department, but but the language would be something to the effect of, I move that the city manager's budget be amended by adding eight-hundred-seven thousand dollars for a renewed capital program. Okay, just something like that. And again, there would be science behind that eight-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars or whatever it may be, based on the council's direction going forward between now and then.
Because I know we did that last year. You know, we did added a position here, a position there. I mean, this is just a tweak, you know, nothing. But thank you, that's all I got.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Okay, and we now move to Councilmember Patrone.
Am I on?
You are on.
All right. Thank you so much for everybody's hard work here. All right. Thank you so much for everybody's hard work here. I do have some questions, and I'm sure that I'll have some even after tonight. So I'll probably put those in a form of an email as I'm continuing to work my way through this and/or maybe at the next meeting or something. Anyway. So kind of following up on Alex's question. She was asking about the TIP money, Mr. Francisco, and she asked if this budget was making the assumption that the 2019, 2020 money, so in other words, the as of July 1st, 2019 money that's currently in the TIP account, as well as this next calendar year, if this budget is relying on getting both of those funds? And my understanding was that you said yes, correct?
That's correct. Yes, the budget is assuming that the council's action in November will be implemented.
Okay. I'm just going to go on record right now and say that I'm very uncomfortable with that because the sky was falling this whole year because we were counting on money that we didn't have any control over whether or not we could really count on it. And it sounds to me like we're doing that again. And I don't, it just feels like we didn't learn any lessons there. So I'm going to just go on record saying that and follow that up at a later time. But I feel like it's important that I get that off my chest because I need to have said it. Okay, so on the city manager's letter, and I don't really care who answers this. I just want to understand what I'm reading for sure. On page five, we were talking about before, Mr. Francisco, that we had kind of shot for the moon on future growth projections in the past. We were very optimistic. And then we saw that we weren't having the same amount of growth. And so we put it down, especially in light of COVID, to be 1 and 3/4% instead of the, what was it, 4% or something like that in the past. But it says that we still had future growth on page roman numeral five. Sorry, I have to flip around here, of 4%. And I didn't, I thought we had reduced that.
I believe the 4% is for use tax. And that's actually conservative, given our growth rates for the past few years. But it's 2% for sales tax in the out years.
Okay, so that's assuming that we're going to be getting more online sales. So you feel like that number's going to go up, that 4% would be a conservative number?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
More online sales and better enforcement of the existing statutes for the collection of taxes on online sales.
Awesome. Okay. And then let's see, the franchise fee growth was, you felt like that would be 3% for '21? And I wondered why that was when last year it was a negative 8 and 3/4. It was a mild winter, you said. And so I wonder, I'm kind of one of those science people, so I feel like maybe that's a climate change thing. Can we really, do we really feel like that we can make a 12-point, 12 and 3/4 point swing?
If you want to change that assumption, you could. But again, the assumption is based on average climatic conditions and that the mild, it was really the mild summer as opposed to the mild winter, would be back to a normal pattern. If that is the case, then a 3% growth assumption would be low because you would be growing from a depressed situation in that mild summer.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to leave it to you. I just kind of raised my eyebrows. It seemed like a big swing. And I wanted more clarification. We covered this a minute ago, the license and permit fee revenue. You see, expected to exceed the projected growth by 1%. So what, am I understanding when I read that, that whatever we had projected at '21, I mean, for '20, that we expect to, we met that and we're expecting to have another percent?
Yeah, based on what we project for the end of fiscal year 2020, the fiscal year '21 projection is based on a 1% growth from that.
Okay, and in '20, well, I'm just trying to, to me, it looked like in reading this that we'd actually met our, we exceeded in '20 what we thought we would do, and then you're saying another percent?
Correct. And what we look at, part of that, you know, what are the trends? But we also, some of the realities we're seeing now, the price of money. And we recognize even in the COVID-19 reality, permit activity has remained very strong. We even received a call from Congressman Cole's office asking about what the impacts looked like on construction and development. We printed a March 2019 compared to a March 2020, and our permit activity was almost identical. So, you know, we're thinking as long as the price of money stays low, which we anticipate through most of the next fiscal year, we anticipate that permit activity to stay relatively strong. So yes, we've exceeded the current-year estimate, and we're going to take our projected year-end for June 30, 2020, add 1% to that.
Yeah, okay. So I just, I thought that was an important positive because we are forever getting this song and dance about how no one ever wants to do business in Norman and no one wants to build here and blah, blah, blah. But it looks to me like lo and behold, people kind of like Norman.
Somebody's building.
Exciting. Okay. I was just curious too about the motor vehicle and tobacco. We've never really discussed that here. And so it's never been part of the budget conversations. And so to, with any particularity anyway, and so I'd love to see more on that at some point. I wonder what we get out of that and what it goes to and whatever we're projected to bring in in '21. I don't even know what those numbers look like. And then, okay, so I feel like just to clear the air too, like because of the COVID effect, and we kind of went, you know, everybody went to their respective hidey holes. The last time we're having budget conversations, the sky was falling. And now it doesn't, it seems like it's magically not falling anymore. So just if the public is watching this, I would like for them to be able to understand how we got from that kind of discussion to a very optimistic discussion that we're at now.
So, Mr. Francisco, I'll jump in too. We did implement some pretty aggressive budget savings measures early on, which we have held fast to. We'd actually scheduled an item on one of our staff meetings to discuss when we would be rolling back the hiring freeze based on the judge's initial ruling on the UNP TIF petition. And then that was all interrupted by our current set of affairs. So a couple of things have happened since those initial budget conversations. We did implement a lot of savings measures which have produced the desired results in providing us the opportunity to finish the current fiscal year in the black and start next fiscal year in as comfortable a position as possible. And two, a judge's ruling on the petition for University North Park. I would say those are the two biggest factors that put a smile on Mr. Francisco's face where in January, not a lot of smiling was going on. But Anthony, please help me fill in those blanks.
No, that's very accurate. I need a haircut, so you probably can't see them smiling.
Me too.
But in January, yes, the cloud in January was about the petition. And these were what-if scenarios. If, in fact, we don't have the ability to use the sales tax from University North Park. The district court ruled that the petition was invalid. So now we assume that the council's action in November will be implemented, which means that we will have those funds within our general fund, capital fund budgets, both in fiscal year '20 and in fiscal year '21.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand correctly though, and maybe it's for Mr. Pyle. If they decide to appeal and the end of June 30th comes around and no dollars have come in from that UNP TIF account, are we still finishing in the black?
I'm going to have to ask Mr. Francisco what that looks like in the projections.
Because that's not very far out.
No doubt. It was a point of substantial debate with Mr. Francisco and Ms. Walker in terms of how do we book it and where do those dollars live until resolution is finalized? And the question that would be before a court of appeals is a matter of will the voters decide on this matter or not? And when might that take place? So right now, all those dollars are still sitting in the University North Park TIF account. But the question would be, if the courts invalidate the petition at the next level, the dollars are still ours based on council's action effective July 1, 2019. So there's a timing issue there and some cash flow issues there. But, Mr. Francisco, if you can describe more eloquently than I, how that translates on June 30 in our books closed?
How that would translate, if the petition is not finally held to be invalid by June 30, is that we have to come up with $3.5 million out of our general fund, and we will not be in the black? And we would be back to the horrifying situations that we were doing what-if scenarios in January with six months fewer time to respond. So that would be a disastrous situation for our general fund.
Okay, so just so everybody understands though, that this isn't, this, we're really looking at two budgets right now. We're looking at the year that, I mean, I understand that this focus for '21. But we have, there's two huge assumptions that are being made. And that one of them is that, not just that you would win the court case, but that it would be, well, I guess it is that you would win. But where I'm going with this is that when you think of COVID-19 and everything's on hold, and we don't know how long we're going to be on hold, we don't know when the court system is going to open back up and that deadline's going to come in where they have to decide whether or not they're going to file for appeal. And then they have another, you know, 45 days and they might do discovery. So we're talking about a very short amount of time to June 30. And we don't even know when that clock starts for the judge's calendar. So I just want to make sure that everybody, so I guess the next part of that is, if there is an element of this that the city can, you know, if we're depending on this money, I would suggest that we have city attorney sit down with the parties, so the appellate or potential appellate and the parties to the UNP TIF amendment from November and see if they can't come up with something that everybody can live with so that they don't file for an appeal. If this is really, you know, something that you're really concerned that if it's a matter of clock and not a matter of win or lose, we're talking about if they file and all of a sudden the time gets strung out past June 30 and you don't have an answer for where the $3.5 million is going to come from, then it sounds like these people need to start talking. Sit down and come to an agreement that they can, everybody can live with. Just a thought. Because otherwise, we're making bets that with money we don't have.
So in that vein, in the event the courts remain closed to July 15, so no decision is made prior to books being closed. In that scenario, Mr. Francisco, for the current fiscal year, our assumption would hold true. Is that your interpretation?
Just the opposite. Our assumption is that the $3.5 million would be recorded to the general fund pursuant to the council's action in November. The petition challenged the council's action in November. So if the petition is not held invalid by June 30, then we have to revert back to the pre-November situation, which is why I have been continuing to apportion sales tax. We would not get that money into the general fund this fiscal year. And the general fund would be $3.5 million worse off this fiscal year and about $1 million worse off next fiscal year.
So again, I'm just going to underscore the suggestion I would make is that sit down and have the parties negotiate on this if you don't want them to file for an appeal. Because the way I, what it looks like to me, just from the interwebs of Facebook and Twitter land, they're going to file if there's not some other, and they obviously don't have any rush to do so with the court being closed, they can't anyway. But if the clock is our biggest enemy right now, then I would certainly suggest that the parties to that contract, the UNP settlement agreement, whatever that's considered, see about sitting down with the person who might be filing for an appeal so that we can move on and with our budget. Okay. Oh, on the use tax, is that, is it allocated? And we're talking about sales tax, how things are allocated? Not with respect to UNP, but, Mr. Francisco, when use tax comes in and there's PSST and Norman forward and whatever, does it get allocated the same?
Yes, it's algebraically allocated between
That's what I was looking for.
Sales tax, Norman forward, sales tax, general fund.
So it's not like PSST gets shorted if it comes in online?
No, ma'am.
Good, okay. Room tax administrative fee, we talked in February 20 about that going up to 5% like it was in 2015. And then your production, your presentation, it said 4%, but in the book it said 3%. So I didn't know where we're going with that.
I'll check on that. I'm pretty sure though that the actual calculation was based on 4%.
Okay, on page 68, it's at 3. The golf course expenses, we were talking earlier about how it's taken a lick with COVID. And I wondered if the expenses were also coming down, so maybe there was some offset there? I mean, the flip side of COVID effect is that it's not costing us as much either, right?
I don't know if Mr. Foster's on the line, but...
Yeah, I've got him. Want to take it?
Yes.
Yes, our expenses are continuing. We have to continue to maintain the property. And so while some of the expenses are down, a lot of the maintenance expenses are still in place and will be.
Okay. On Westwood Golf, while we're at it, the projected budgets that we had received on January the 16th show, you know, incrementally more interfund transfers for subsidy from the general fund. And at that time, in mid-January, the projection was 632,000 would be what the general fund would subsidize. And then the out years up to fiscal year '25 being 861,000. But now I'm, there is no subsidy, which is exciting, but I'm wondering where the money's coming from? How are we able to escape such a large subsidy payment?
I think the answer to that is that a lot of that subsidy number was a projection from last year's budget preparation. And the conditions turned out to be very different. Anthony, you wanna, if you wanna add to that, Anthony or not, but it's my understanding.
That's, that's roughly correct, yes. The, when we adopted the budget last year, we had adopted the budget based on of the previous year, which were very bad for golf. And the reality of the current year has been that we've not had to experience sort of a subsidy.
Okay, so, and then I noticed that in the out years. So let me put it this way, in January, when we got this document. The out years, like I say, went, continued to incrementally climb. However, this one shows that the out years remain zero. So is, do you feel pretty confident that we're not, we're no longer gonna need to be subsidizing Westwood Golf?
Two things, yeah, in, in our conversations with council. The recognition of concern for the general fund subsidizing Westwood Golf. We hear your concerns and want to adjust our operational. Our, our business plans as much as possible to achieve that goal. So we heard you loud and clear. Our marching orders are to work towards the full operation without subsidy of the Westwood Golf Course. And, and that asset, we wanna make sure that asset is, is as self-sufficient as possible. We do recognize that, you know, most of our parks and open spaces like that don't generate any revenue at all. But our, 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 our marching orders were loud and clear, that we are to operate as close to break even as possible. We bring you back any changes to that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle.
I could also, if I might also add, one of the things that's changing the projections down into the future is the success that we've had at the pool and the restaurant changes. Changed the, the revenue picture dramatically from what we were used to. So it's all going in the right direction.
Keeping it in the Westwood family is basically what you're saying. We won't, we won't have to pull from general, it can stay in the Westwood family.
That's right, it's all in the same fund, always has been, and they've always, over the years, have always helped each other.
Thank you, okay. And then also, we had talked about renegotiating with the community partners for services that the city provides. I know that probably any sort of negotiating with anyone is out of standstill. I'm bleeding that from the COVID effect. But I still wanted to underscore that I think that, I mean, that's been a conversation that I listened to take place well before I was on council. So I would still encourage those conversations to happen. And I was encouraged to hear about the potential end of May or whenever the COVID cloud lifts of the hospital. And whenever you hear on that money, that it would be exciting if we could potentially budget that. So yeah, just keep us up to date. And then in the email, I noticed on Mr. Carter's, on their response, Mr. Pyle, that you'd given to Mr. Carter's email. About the low-cost spay neuter, that we still have money in that account. We originally budgeted 20,000 and there's still 14 and a half left. So I wondered if the same was true potentially for the mosquito program. So I'd like to let my ward know whether or not that's gonna happen or not.
That is a good question, Mr. Francisco. Do we, do we know what we stuck in the budget for the mosquito abatement program that Parks and Rec operated in years past?
That was part of the funds that was assumed to be saved this fiscal year. But it is still appropriated if the city manager wanted to, to do that program, the money is still appropriated. But it's part of the increased savings assumption in the general fund.
As was low-cost spay neuter, correct? I mean, it was on that list.
I don't think that the reduction in the spay neuter program was the low-cost program. I believe that was the contracted spay neuter program that's being taken over by the on in-house veteran area.
That's correct, we took 10,000 out of that program, low cost stayed there.
Okay, so, and then the other is whether or not we're going to be doing the 4th of July, assuming that the city, and I don't know what the answer right now. Because I know that 4th of July, everything could likely still be closed, unfortunately. But that's just, I would rather people not die of COVID than can watch fireworks on TV or something. But if things open back up, just kinda have that back in the back of your mind as to whether or not we're going to consider talking about doing that.
Absolutely, Your Honor.
And then I so wanna say that I appreciate all of you and your openness. And you have my back on the, on the moratorium, discussing the moratorium on foreclosures and evictions. And I wanna let you know that while the court is technically closed, they're still doing. There, since we had our conversation via email, there have been several evictions that take place over the phone. The court is actually meeting on some of those. And so I was intending to call Ms. Walker, I need to send her. Oklahoma Watch is actually doing a, keeping tabs on all of the counties. In this perilous times that we find ourselves in. And our county has quite a few, actually, that have taken place since the court has, since we, everything's been shut down and the court's been closed. So I think that we definitely need to be looking at that. And again, Oklahoma Watch has even been talking about that, that, you know, these are families, these are kids, these are not, I mean, it's not just someone that. You know, can do fine couch surfing it or whatever, I mean, these are people, there, you know, there's a face and a name behind every single one of them. And we can't have our homeless population going through the roof at the same time that we're trying to keep people at home.
I talked to the judge about those, the, the dockets, and I'm not sure if you were copied on that email, I think it was to Councilmember Wilson, so I'll forward that to you.
Thank you. All right, and that's all I have for now, I, I really appreciate every single one of you, and I know that you're working so very hard. And I'm proud to be a member of this team.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Hall.
Um, I, most of my questions have already been addressed. So I just wanna make a few comments, especially since this is my first round of walking through the budget process in such extraordinary circumstances and in several ways, actually. So I really appreciate all of the work that Mr. Francisco and all of his staff has put into this. And the personal delivery of our documents on Friday was really appreciated. And also the detailed letter from our city manager, Mr. Pyle. It's all his, his first round of getting through the budget process, too. So it's been interesting to me and I'm learning a lot. And I just appreciate all the work that's gone into it and all of the effort to educate council on where we are. I appreciate Councilmember Patron seeking more clarification about where we are with the appeal process and understanding, making sure that we all understand the uncertainty that is still out there. I have a better understanding now of why we're going with the assumptions that we are. But I still feel like there is a lot of uncertainty that we just aren't gonna know what the outcome of all of that is. So I guess it remains to be seen how that's all gonna play out and we'll deal with it when we, when we need to. I also wanted to thank Mr. O'Leary for his work on the Porter Acres situation. I'm, I'm getting into the email that you sent earlier today, and I'm sure I'm gonna have some more questions about that. But I really appreciate your efforts and the options that you're proposing there. I think this is a really important project for our ward and our city. So I appreciate the work that you've put into that. I also just wanna be on record of supporting some type of moratorium on our rent situation for our Norman residents. It sounds like there's a lot of work going into that. I'm really pleased to hear that we may be getting some additional funding through CDG to help address that. And I'm also just going to remain optimistic that there may be other, other things that we can pursue as a municipality to get some kind of relief with all of the things that are affecting our city and the, and our operations as a city. And I also wanted to just reiterate statements that's already been made about our emergency operations center. I think we could not have had a more dramatic example of why we need to make sure that we properly fund our emergency operations center. And, you know, hopefully we can make that a high priority. And also very interested in pursuing, continuing to pursue all of the options to be less reliant on sales tax. So I look forward to those continued conversations and whatever changes that we may need to make to look at other ways of going about our business. So that's really all I have. I just wanna thank all of our city staff who are doing the work every single day to keep our city running and responding to so many different concerns from our citizens of how things are working or how to take care of things. So I really appreciate all of you and all of your efforts and getting to work every single day when everyone else is supposed to be staying in place. So thank you, thank you to all of our city staff for really rising to the occasion under really difficult circumstances and challenges. So thanks to all of you.
Okay, we have Councilmember Wilson again.
Can you hear me, okay? I just wanted to speak to the evictions. I talked to Judge Bachman a couple of days ago. And he confirmed that Judge Napoli and others had talked and they weren't actively pursuing evictions. And then Catherine Walker sent out an email, which I think Catherine probably should share that with everybody, to myself. She'd sent it to me. But it basically confirmed that most of the evictions, which I think there were only two that actually went through, were from prior to March 1st. So these were situations that are already in the pipe. Now, if they're doing call-ins and workarounds, I don't know. But I felt, I got the feeling that the, that the district court was supportive of a moratorium. And actually, Judge Bachman said he would love to have our support in that as a council.
Councilmembers, I would just say, I think you've probably said, oh, we need to about that subject matter at this meeting, since it's not part of the agenda.
Well, I mean, the CDBG money is there.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up right now, are there any other questions from council members?
I've, I've got one, can I ask a quick question about the UMP TIF fund? That 3.5 million, Anthony, is that, is that exclusive to the general fund? Or is there capital fund money separate from that or included in that?
No, it's, it's about 3, 3.4 million actually in the general fund and about 400,000 in the capital fund.
Okay, for some reason I thought that the capital fund money was separate, but I, so I appreciate that clarification, thank you.
And Councilmember Hall, do you have another question?
One more comment. The adjustments that Mr. Francisco has asked Visit Norman and the Norman Arts Council to anticipate. Because I think it's really realistic to expect that that particular sales, the room tax fund is gonna take a heavy hit, at least for the short term, if not for the long term. And I just wanted to pass along that I am the representative from council for Visit Norman. So I participated in a Zoom meeting about a week ago when they literally worked through what they thought was gonna be an $850,000 budget that they basically reduced by half. And it was really painful to watch, but they tried really, really hard to anticipate what the impact of like a 10% occupancy rate, I think was the term they used at the time, for all of our hotels in Norman. And just what the impact that was gonna be as we collect the, or don't collect the room tax fund. So I just wanted to personally say thank you to Dan Shim for understanding our relationship and what they needed to do as an entity to respond to what we're all calling the COVID effect. Because in that particular fund, it, it's, it's, it's dire right now. So I'm counting on you, Mr. Francisco, I like the J, I like the saxophone, I hope that's it. So I'm, I'm going with you on that one and hope we see that sooner rather than later.
On that point, if I may, councilmembers, I was listening to your short-term rental discussion. But just understand that, that the interest of the room tax is very much tied to that. And the timing of that is very important. Because during your two years or so of discussion of that, I am thinking of the lost room tax. Every football season, when, when those short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts and Airbnbs and Homeaways are full and we're not collecting any room tax on them. Very important that we try to get that implemented by football season, again, under the assumption that we're going to have a football season with fans in the stands.
Okay, any final questions?
I think my, my comment was exactly what Anthony just addressed. And I will commend Mr. Francisco for presenting this in a, I wouldn't say a positive outlook, but you know, just a very calm one. I, I certainly don't think the sky is not falling. I think it's like falling 18 times over at this point. So the COVID effect is real, it's unknown, and it's gonna disproportionately impact Oklahoma cities. And I have said that every chance that I get. So I appreciate your all's creativity on this and how we address it. But let's face it, it's, it's a guessing game right now, we don't know how long it's gonna last, we don't know the full impact. I think I wanna commend the Chamber of Commerce for supporting our businesses as much as possible. We all need to continue to push resources out. I'm hoping we're gonna get ahold of this thing soon. But if we're not expecting our peak to hit for two more weeks, it's really even hard to estimate, again, when this will end. So continue tightening that belt and, and it's unfortunate that we can't hire the staff that we so desperately need. But this is, you know, I feel like we wrestle with one emergency to the next, and now we have two major emergencies facing us. So I'm really, really hopeful that we can get through at least one of them that we can control, or at least someone can control. COVID-19 is, is a different story, unfortunately. And I'll second Councilmember Hall's gratitude. How hard staff is working. This is, you know, we've said it a million times, how unprecedented this is. But every day when I wake up and open my eyes, unprecedented slaps me in the face as we try and figure out how to get our community through this. So I know we're all working really, really hard and keep it up and practice some self-care, cause you can't help people if you can't take care of yourself. But continue to ask the tough questions. I think if anything, being home has given us, hopefully, more time to be with these beautiful budget books, becoming just engrossed and, and well knowledgeable about all the things within them. So thank you for all of your work on this. And again, this is one of the many steps in this process. And Mr. Francisco, thank you again for giving it your best shot, cause that's like all you can do right now. We, you know, figure out what's next. But we do know that the public hearing is next week, it's our, as of right now, our one item off of consent. Well, hopefully, Brenda, can, can you please send out some instructions to us on how that will work? Cause I'm sure we'll all get questions on how residents can participate in that.
Sure, absolutely.
Awesome, and that's all that I have. And again, just thanks to all of you, we'll get through this, even if we don't know when. It's, it's, we can guarantee we'll get through this, it's not the first pandemic the world has encountered, it's just the first one in a century. And again, I wore this to keep me hopeful, Game May made me do it, that's right, I'm holding on to the fall, that's right, I believe it. So stay positive, let me know if I can help in any way, and, and thank you all for all that you're doing. With that, I, I think, I think, awesome, I see thumbs up all the way around, I think we're gonna wrap it up for tonight. And again, let us know if you have any additional questions.
Thanks, Your Honor.
I just...
Are we all done?
Yeah.
I can still hear you.
You hang up, no, you hang up.
It's still on TV.